I'd like to call to order a work session on Monday, September 21st. Before we begin the actual meeting, gang, I want to remind you, we have a special meeting this evening after the work session. So, everybody's around the table, and we have one item on the work session. The council will receive an update on the El Rio Design Guidelines and the Planning Standards Project. We have Joe Schmidt, Long Range Planner, to present, and some other guests, and you will introduce them, right?
Yes, I will, thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, council members, thank you for the opportunity to provide you a briefing on the El Rio Design Guidelines and Planning Standards that we've been working on. Joining me tonight is Felipe Zubia, who's with Matrix Design Group, who is part of the consultant team on this project, and also Jeff Engelmann, who is a principal with J2 Engineering and Environmental Design, who is a principal on the project. So, they're going to assist me in the presentation as we go along.
Great, thank you, Joe.
I'd like to start off just by looking briefly at the project schedule. We executed the IGA back in December of 2013, and then we got the consultant hired onboard in October 2014. Project got initiated underway after that in November, and then you'll recall, just recently, in the past few months, we extended the IGA to allow a little more time to finish the project up. So, we're here at a point where we just about have a final draft document that's been put together. We're hoping to execute a public participation by hosting an open house in October. I said that might be in Buckeye. Actually, the open house may be at the Nature Center at Estrella. We're working on confirming availability, but we will have an open house and invite stakeholders to attend to go over the basics of the document. And then hopefully by November, we'll have a final document, and then sometime in the December-January timeframe, we can entertain adoption of the plan. The plan is organized in around eight chapters and provide direction not only for the character and vision of the individual areas within the study corridor, but also provide some guidance on land development, open spaces, paths, trails, and edge treatments, landscape guidelines, signage guidelines. There's a chapter on economic development, discussing economic development potential, and then there's a chapter on pilot projects where each of those cities that are involved in the project get a conceptual site plan and preliminary cost estimate for a project within their jurisdiction. And I know you've heard it before, but it bears repeating because the Gila River watershed is an immense watershed, and even though when you go out along the river, you say, "Where's the river?", you know, you see a trickle of water, but it basically drains 46,000 square miles, that's highlighted in this slide, and it traverses, it gathers from the Verde River and the Salt River, and then as it passes through Goodyear, it becomes the Gila River, and it drains that entire basin that extends not only into northwestern Arizona, but also eastern into New Mexico. The study area that we've undertaken covers a distance of seventeen and a half miles from the confluence of the Gila River at the east end, and all the way over to State Road 85 on the west. And about six miles of that, seventeen and a half miles, runs through Goodyear. The study area covers 53 square miles, which is defined as the Gila River floodplain, which is highlighted and shaded on the map that's in front of you. But we extended it also a quarter to a half a mile out along the edge to also attempt to influence the design of properties that are on the edge of the floodplain to ensure that they develop also in compatibility with the riverine environment. There's about 26 square miles that are in the FEMA flood risk zone, and an additional 6.9 square miles that were recently added to the floodplain in what's referred to as the Buckeye Slough. And if you haven't heard about that issue, you probably will. About 33 and a half square miles of the project is affected by FEMA flood designation. And as you also well know, it flows through three municipal jurisdictions, and also through the unincorporated Maricopa County. On this map, unincorporated Maricopa County is shown in white, and you can see a large portion of the river corridor is actually in the county. But it's presumed that over time, development of that property is more likely to occur within the boundaries of a municipality than in the county. And so, that's why it's important that we work together and try to get guidelines that are consistent with one another so that we aren't creating a situation that we don't like and come to inherit later. And just by way of information, the land ownership, about 26,000 acres is in private hands, which is about 80% of the land area within the study area, and another 12% is owned by BLM, and the remaining 8% is held by local jurisdictions or state wildlife. Of course, a large portion of the local holdings is the Estrella Mountain Regional Park, located at the eastern edge of the study area on the south side of the river. I know that we seem like we are studying this to death, but hopefully, we're making progress and we're building upon the studies that have come before us. The studies extend back as far as 1987, when a water course master plan was done for the Gila River, and then subsequently to that, the El Rio Water Course Master Plan Vision Document, as well as an archaeological investigation of the El Rio Corridor in 2001. And then most recently, the one that you're probably most familiar with is the El Rio Water Course Master Plan that was adopted and prepared in 2006.
Hey, Joe, can I ask a question?
Yes, ma'am.
In the privately owned land, how many landowners are there, do you know?
I don't have recollection of the number of landowners.
It would be an interesting figure to have. We don't need it tonight.
Okay.
But if you had that...
And who they are, really.
It's just, you know, it's interesting to know how many landowners you have to work through, because this is going to cost, and...
Yes. It's fairly fragmented, from what I recall.
I don't remember. I was on that, I sat on that committee for a while in 2005, so, and unfortunately, I had a map, but I threw it all away because I thought we weren't going to do it anymore.
Well, we can get you that information.
Wally?
Can I ask a question? Can I ask one of your likes?
Which one did you like?
I don't care. Thank you.
My question is, in 87 for the 97-mile master plan, and then we did one in 2006 that carved out 53 miles of the 97, is that basically what they did to make it more manageable? Or is the 97 the overall picture, and we're only doing a portion of that? Does that make sense?
Yes, Councilmember Campbell, that the El Rio Water Course Master Plan was more focused on the segment from the confluence of the Aguafaria to this State Road 85 Bridge, which is 17 and a half miles.
Oh, okay.
So, it was more focused than the entire Gila River corridor.
Okay. Thank you. And when you talk about the Buckeye Slough, is that where all the salt cedars are?
Councilmember Campbell, no, that is where there's a lot of farmland right now.
Okay.
And a couple hundred structures.
Okay, thank you.
I'll touch on that a little bit more as we get deeper into the presentation, too. So, the El Rio Water Course Master Plan that was adopted in 2006 basically had six objectives: to develop structural and non-structural alternatives to minimize flooding potential, to manage environmental restoration of habitat by removal of salt cedar trees and reintroduction of native species, to enhance water quality through wetlands and open flow channels, to integrate multi-use recreational facilities and trails along the Gila River, to provide educational opportunities through interpretive hiking trails and riparian education centers, and to highlight this economic asset that could become a regional and national destination. And hopefully, through the efforts of this planning document, we're moving in that direction. That kind of gives you the background to this current study, and the approach that was used to start off this planning effort was to identify 12-character areas. That is to look at areas that have similarities and look at the land uses that are, the key features that are in place, and then the land uses that would be best suited to be in those areas.
Joe, on this map, can you tell us, and I always have to say this, but Jackie Mack's Lake?
Yeah.
That's the one, yeah, yeah.
It'd be right, it'd be right on the edge.
If council hasn't seen that, it's unbelievable.
It is.
It's a huge body of water with all types of, really, it would be a great idea if our council at one time could take a trip there. It's just, it's a short trip, but it is extremely interesting in there. And I think by seeing that, you have a better view of what this is all about, okay? And we understand the flood and the floodplain and what we have to do, but I think, on a visual, I think that tells a story. So, if we could do that with the council sometime, it'd be great. Thanks, Joe.
You bet. It's like being in a different part of the world.
Sherry? That was going to be kind of like my question. We're talking about the actual water. I was looking through this, and in Avondale, there's water, and obviously in Buckeye, there's a lake, and, you know, are we or can we have water usable for recreation like they do in Buckeye for our section of this? Because I think that would really, I think it'd be great for development, for, you know, I think of Tempe Town Lake type of thing. If you're going to put development there, then if we could have actual water in some of these channels. Because obviously, if they're doing it in Avondale, they're doing it in Buckeye, can we do it in the middle, too?
Councilman Loretano, when the El Rio Water Course Master Plan was done, there was a lot of attention paid to the departure corridor for the airport, and FAA regulations discourage open bodies of water within 10,000 feet of the approach or departure end of a runway.
Oh, shucks.
So, that is why that has not, to date, been an emphasis of ours. We can and are working with the Flood Control District on a plan for potentially expanding the Jackie Mack Lake and bringing it westward.
That's not actually Buckeye. That's actually more Avondale, the base, that's what we're talking about, right?
Right.
The Buckeye Irrigation District Lake.
Yeah, it was, well, it's kind of been referred to as Jackie Mack Lake when he was part of the Buckeye Irrigation District.
He was part of that. He's the one that took me on my private tour.
Which is what it is. It's an impoundment for the Buckeye Irrigation District.
But it makes it sound like it's in Buckeye, when it's not.
Well, and we've started referring to it as the El Rio Lake.
Right.
We'll change that, yeah.
But could we have a conversation that we would get water 1,000 feet away from the airport?
10,000.
10,000? How far is 10,000? How many miles?
Two miles.
Two miles?
Yes, ma'am.
Would that reach up to like the entrance to Estrella? Or is that too close?
No, I don't think it'd reach to Estrella.
Well, I do remember then we were looking at a resort from the King property.
Yeah, yeah.
And they had talked about flooding it, having a water base to all of that. So, I can see the city manager, let's get Nancy there. Brian?
Mayor members of the council, my antiness is this, is back then, we were talking about the potential for flowing water, because then you're not actually attracting waterfowl that land on a still body of water. So, that was some of the discussions back around King Ranch back in the day. And I do believe if you go, Joe, I would look at it this way, probably a mile either side of Estrella Parkway, almost all the way to Cotton Lane would be the area you're referring to, the 10,000 feet, depending on the departure corridor of the airport. But it kind of takes in, most of the King Ranch area would not be able to have a standing body of water or west of Estrella Parkway.
But could we have it, that past Cotton Lane, then?
Joe, you want to take that one?
We'd have to look at it, my point being is that whatever open body of water we look at, we have to take the airport into consideration. And so, that's why you don't see it as a dominant feature through that part of the corridor.
Although, this is all within a walkable, and, you know, when you're, a long walk, but it is. It still has connectivity. When you go down there, you'll see that connectivity. And this, and part of this was a path to walk and different features as we walked along, so it was, it really benefited not all of us. It really did. I think that was the intent when the committee met, and it sounds like it's still the intent. It's to bring us all together and someplace else to observe nature and have a nature walk.
It'd sure be nice to have a little water somewhere.
A little water somewhere?
Yeah. I mean, that's a real selling point for families and picnicking and fishing, or, you know, whatever. Water just draws people, and if it's just two or three or four or five miles of no water, I would hope that maybe we could have a little conversation. I know this isn't going to be done tomorrow, so we have plenty of time to talk about it.
Again, it's just something we have to take into consideration. We understand the desire for water.
I think the tour will help them look through the possibilities and what they feel. They really need to see it, so, okay. Thanks, Joe.
Of the 12-character areas, there's five that occur in Goodyear. Character area number one is a high-value habitat, which runs along predominantly the bottom of the river, all the way the length of the project, and that's the area which is most likely to deserve preservation and not have development. Number four is the King Ranch and Recreation Area, which is pretty self-evident. It's the area where King Ranch was planned, and King Ranch had incorporated a lot of the guiding principles that are recommended in this document. Unfortunately, it didn't get off the ground and hopefully will someday, but it had already recognized the value of orientating toward the river and had that built in. Area five is the Estrella Park Recreation Area, which is primarily comprised of the Estrella Mountain Regional Park, and so that obviously is the primary key resource in that area. And then on the north side of the river are two more character areas. One is called the El Rio East Employment Recreation Area, which is basically between the river and MC85, which is predominantly non-residential at this point, also because it's off the end of the runway and adjacent to MC85 and the railroad and all that. But it also has the opportunity to be a transition area between that and the river, so there could be some recreation opportunities in that area. And then lastly, the Goodyear North Bank Development Area, likewise impacted by a number of things, and I failed to mention, SR30 alignment is also in the mix on some of these properties, as well as the railroad and MC85, and high-tension power lines as well. But again, the area between the developable area and the river can be considered a transition that can work between the two different, differing land uses. And then lastly, on Chapter Two, is my time up?
That's my chair.
The future land use actually matches up pretty well to the character areas, particularly as they're depicted in Goodyear. Now, lastly, on Chapter Two, the El Rio theme, the document provides some guidance on theming for the corridor and the character areas, recommending things such as use of local materials, creating connections, promoting accessibility and year-round use, respecting the river setting, and building on the El Rio brand by using the colors and fonts that's reflected in the logo for the project throughout the project. Chapter Three gets into land use design concepts, and I'm going to turn that over to Felipe Zubia to run through the next section. Felipe, if you don't mind.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. I appreciate you having me here. First, I want to recognize Jeff with J2 Design. His firm was the prime consultant on the contract, and I was, you know, lucky enough to be involved in the project. We took on some of the land use issues throughout the project, and that's what I'm going to go through here this evening. But the overall objective for the study area was really to recognize, I guess, first of all, backing up a little bit, as was noted, the project has been going on for, well, close to 20 years. And with that in mind, it's not that there hasn't been anything done. It's progressively gotten into more and more detail. So, today, we're here to discuss a little bit more detail on where this is going with regard to land use and design within the corridor. And one thing that the Southwest Valley can be commended upon is the cooperation that's taken place between the four jurisdictions. And I don't think I can point to any other place in the valley where you've had four jurisdictions come together and work towards commonality in land use and design for a corridor. And it really speaks well to where the corridor is going from a land use perspective. In the past, you've seen communities kind of turn their back to the river and push, you know, the back of industrial development next to the river. That's not the case here, and it's refreshing to see. It's a different approach to development, and that's really what we're trying to establish here. So, with that in mind, in doing that, there are four objectives that we're trying to accomplish in this land use and design concept. One is to recognize that the area does flood, in fact, quite significantly, if you look at the numbers. And so, we want to minimize those impacts, not only for life and safety, but also because of property damage. At the end of the day, if the cities are investing a lot of infrastructure in this area, and then we have to deal with flooding, that is a big impact on local budgets, and that's something we want to recognize and try to address prior to the development coming in into the area. Secondly, the, as you also saw, a large portion of this corridor is within private hands. So, we want to recognize that there are property rights, that people do have a right to develop, and that we want to recognize that there's development that's appropriate, provided that the risk can be mitigated and it's in the appropriate location. Thirdly, the development, again, is allowed, but it's allowed at appropriate scale and appropriate location. Then finally, fourthly, the, we also want to recognize that it's not static out here. It is going to change, and that is, there are ways to mitigate flood risk by design, so you can take some properties out of the floodway or out of the floodplain. And there's also opportunities for regional flood improvements as well, and that's something that we recognize throughout the document. So, again, we recognize that there's risk, but we also recognize that it's not a static situation, that things change over time. So, as we get past the objectives, then, one of the things that was a challenge as we were looking at this area is, again, it's great that the four jurisdictions are working together, but we had to recognize that each jurisdiction is an independent jurisdictional body that has the ability to make decisions, legislative decisions, to govern their cities. So, we needed to recognize that in some way and make sure that the document that we ended up with was something that can still work for each jurisdiction without encumbering those legislative decisions. So, in doing that, we actually came up with an approach that provided for what we call a transect. And transect, we pulled that term and that approach from what some of you may be familiar with, is form-based design. And in doing that, we applied it in such a way that we allowed two separate transects, one transect if you were not in the floodplain, and a second transect if you were in the floodplain. And we'll go through a little bit later here exactly how that applies if you're a property within the corridor and how staff would implement that. So, first then, dealing with the view shed transect. Again, this is a transect that is a land use and design, or a use and intensity guideline for property that's not in the floodplain. And the way that the transect was set up is it steps down intensity of development as you get closer to the river in order to preserve the views of the river corridor as well as the mountain views. There is an exception, however, and that has to do with development adjacent to the river. Again, we wanted to recognize that this is a major asset in the Southwest Valley, and there are opportunities to bring nice development adjacent to the river and capitalize on that asset. So, in order to do that, you are allowed to do that, provided, of course, that it's out of the floodplain and that a detailed plan is provided to the jurisdiction that the proposed development is within. So, that's a way that we allow that type of development to occur. Outside of that, then, the expectation is that the development gets less intense and starts to step down as you get closer to the river corridor. So, then the flood risk transect. And this transect does apply to property that is not only within a current floodplain, but I forget the term that flood, that the flood control is using, but a designated, a preliminarily designated floodplain as well, which actually covers that Buckeye Slough area. And this transect actually is applied by utilizing the established FEMA flood maps, and it does that by establishing the different intensities based on the level of flood, the level of the flood elevation. So, in this transect, you'll see that the floodway, which is the river corridor, is the far-left part of the transect. The next transect, the next section over is actually the transect that deals with flood elevations as three foot above the base flood elevation, and then, or above the 100-year floodplain. The next section over is one to three feet within the 100-year floodplain. And as you step out into less intense development or higher risk of flooding, you get a development that's allowed to be more dense and more intense. And when I say more dense and more intense, we're not talking going to urban-type of densities, but you're allowing something to go from one unit per five acres to an acre or two, a unit or two per acre. So, those are the type of densities we're talking about within the flood risk area. So, again, as we, as I kind of talk through that, I want to go ahead and show you an example of how that would apply. So, in this case here, you'll see, if I can highlight, if I can point out the areas here, the stars just pointed out for me. Thank you, Joe.
Do it again.
Yeah, thank you, yeah. So, this kind of shows you how the properties match up with the floodplain map. So, the star is actually within an area that's designated as three-plus feet in flood elevation. So, as you do that, then, we then refer to the table in the transect, and again, remember, what you don't have here is the other half of the table that tells you the actual depth, but if you look on, again, the, where the star just went to the natural area, that is a three-plus depth, three-plus-foot depth, and any property that's within that category then has to follow that column. So, you would see here that because of the depth of the flood in that area, proposed uses that are considered high vulnerabilities, such as high-density multifamily or medium-density type of developments, and then on the non-residential side, large gathering areas, commercial areas, those areas would not be allowed because of the level of flood risk. As you go down and get into the more, the less vulnerable type of developments, you start lowering the density, you start lowering the intensity of non-residential development, and then you start allowing that type of development. However, what you see there is, on the next level down, you see a P2. What that P2 indicates, and you can't see... What that P2 indicates, and you can't see it here, but you can probably see it in your printouts, is that it allows that less vulnerable development, provided that it's designed in such a way to take away the flood risk. So you're permitting it, but the developer needs to take away the flood risk either by design or by flood, or by a structure that protects the, the development. And then all the way down to low vulnerability, the lowest vulnerability would be again, a very low-density development that would be permitted because those can be designed in such a way that it's not adversely impacted by potential flooding. So that's how the flood risk transect applies. I, I believe that we, we still have some, another few calls to kind of wrap up the details of that. But we believe, again, it's a great way to allow all four jurisdictions to come together with some sort of design concepts that allows the, the four jurisdictions to continue to, to, to plan and develop as their councils or board sees fit. So with that in mind, I want to make one last comment in that regard, and that has to do with the, these land use design concepts do not change the general plan, they do not change the zoning. And again, that was, that we, we're very careful not to do that, particularly because we know that Avondale doesn't want Goodyear or Buckeye determining what their land use and vice versa for, for Goodyear and Buckeye. So this plan does not change that. It simply is a guidance document for intensity and density of development as they come in and comply with their local general plan. So that, that there is how we were able to, to structure the document and make it so that it's agreeable to all different planning departments.
Literally playing in the sandbox together.
Yes.
So I have a question, since we have our own general plan.
Yes.
And some of this may not be specific to our general plan. And when you were saying that where in the 100-year floodplain where it was three feet, three or more feet, that there could not be a large gathering place, that that would not be permitted. However, if our jurisdiction, if our city wanted to, instead of building a development, wanted to say, put a park in, and we wanted to put a Ramada in for a large gathering, would we be allowed to do that?
You would. When I, when, when we make the, the statement that a large gathering area, we're talking about commercial gathering areas.
Okay.
But open space areas are permitted within that area.
Because we're pretty creative and we, we may be even more creative as we go down as soon as we can find the money. But I, I don't want to preclude us from being able to have large Ramadas or whatever, anything to entice people to use this area.
Right.
Is what we would like to do.
So, so one of the things that the document does also is that i- if you do have a large gathering area, the recommendations are that any of those areas are taken out of the floodplain by design. So again, so then it's permitted. And then also that a, a, a safe means of egress is identified.
Right.
In the event of, of a, in a flood event.
Flash flood or something.
Right.
Well, I know that, I'm very familiar with building parks where we actually had Ramadas and, and areas that, and purposely they would flood when the Sacramento River would flood.
Right.
And then when the water would recede, we still had the facilities there and we had no damage. And not that we're going to have a lot of water, because apparently our little neck of the woods doesn't have any water, but you never know. We may have a flash flood someday. So I just want to be sure that our hands aren't tied if we decide to do that.
You're not.
But, thanks.
Joe?
As long as we're at a stopping point talking about land use, how does this, do all of these land use, design concepts, et cetera, affect the current development agreement that we have at King Ranch?
Councilman Stip, these will be adopted and work prospectively rather than retrospectively. So if we end up renegotiating that, then they could come into play. And by all, in all likelihood, we will be renegotiating that. But as I said before, the King Ranch development was very cognizant of the, of the river environment and was designed in a, in a manner that is pretty consistent with what we're recommending. The idea is that it, it would work prospectively for all properties and then would be used as a guiding document in considering rezonings within the corridor area. And that's how we would implement it. We wouldn't adopt it for enforcement on pre-existing development agreements or pre-existing entitlements.
So realistically, there's, there's really not adverse effect on property ownership at King Ranch right now?
That's correct. It would only come into play if there was a change in zoning or density.
Not sure if I heard you correctly on the renegotiating, King Ranch, there'd be a time we're going to renegotiate King Ranch? Did I hear that?
Well, I don't know anything more than you know about it at this point in time. I just.
It's up for sale.
I'm just, suppose that the development deals that were made back then may or may not be the same as what would be wanted to move forward. So it was just a presumption that they might come back and try to renegotiate.
I just want to make sure we get the money we're owed. That's all. Period. As far as negotiations are concerned, so.
I remember that.
They owe us money and I realize it's a lot and they may want to come in and say, we can't make it work without you reducing that. But my position, as long as I'm here, is I want the money they owe us.
There'll be tons.
Understood. Okay, moving forward, I'd like to turn it over to, to Jeff now to talk a little bit about the next chapters four and five, dealing with trails and edge treatments and the landscape guidelines.
Thank you, Joe. Mayor and council, my pleasure to be here this evening. Thank you for the invitation. And Mayor, you even mentioned this in some of your opening remarks. One of the first things that we took a look at when we started to work on the El Rio report were the existing network trails that existed either along the river or that were planned both in the city of Goodyear, the city of Buckeye, and Avondale. And we had a, a very good meeting with Nathan Torres and Joe here at the city of Goodyear to make sure that we got the latest and greatest map, which you just recently adopted earlier this year. And so we, we wanted to make sure that the connectivity between the communities and along the river was of paramount importance to the overall design guidelines. And we also wanted to make sure that development wouldn't come in and cut that access off by not allowing that to continue. So by placing the yellow highlighted line that you see on the map in front of you on both the north and south banks of the river, is that continuous connection of trail systems that we see to happen along the Gila River. That trail would be a hard-paved, 12-foot-wide concrete trail system with a four-foot soft shoulder off to the side. We found that to be very applicable on the other trail systems that we've been very fortunate to work in along the Rio Salado and the Trace Rios environmental restoration efforts, both in the city of Phoenix. What that does allow is the hard-surface trail, of course, for mothers with strollers, rollerbladers, skateboarders. That type of environment and surface is very conducive to that. For joggers, mountain bikers, they prefer the softer surface. And so that four-foot immediately adjacent trail system allows for that multi-use to take a place along the river. Then in the river itself, we're also proposing a four-foot wide dirt or earthen trail. That trail, obviously during flow events, would be undermined and would have to be reestablished, but at very minimal cost. Again, the hard-surface trail along both banks, and then those are connected with overlooks and trailheads spaced along and throughout the corridor. And we actually took Goodyear's lead in designating those trailheads by different levels of intensity. And those are spelled out in the document as well. So some would allow automobile parking, some would allow equestrian parking, some don't have any parking at all, depending upon access and where they actually are. But again, putting them on a map, connecting them with this trail system allows that development to occur and allows those IGA and joint use agreements with private development when they come in to construct their portion of the trail that would continue this string, this ribbon along the, along the river. The other thing that we developed in these guidelines, and, and again, we're refining them as we talk, but we hope to finish them in the next month or two, is this whole edge treatment and how is development going to interface with the river. One of the very important things is, and I think Joe hit this, we want to make sure that throughout all of these jurisdictions, Maricopa County, city of Avondale, city of Goodyear, and city of Buckeye, that we are not backing up to the river and blocking views to the river or negating the importance that the rivers had on the overall development of this area dating back thousands of years. And so this edge treatment is very important. So we want to make sure that we're planning for that connectivity to happen through private development and requiring 60% open space. Now, 60% open space doesn't necessarily mean all parks along the edge. So they can bring their roads down to the edge, but we want to make sure that we have enough open space throughout their entire development that these connections take place either by their roadway edge, through their parks and open space that they develop as part of their development agreement, that the end of the cul-de-sacs aren't completely walled off, that the end of the cul-de-sac is wedged open to allow that access for those neighbors and those residents within that subdivision to come out and interact with the El Rio Trail System. And so we're looking at connections, a minimum of every 500 feet along the entire corridor, to force that connection to happen and to make sure that it's continued throughout the entire development. So that's, that's our goal. And in these guidelines, again, modification, they are guidelines. They're not rules, they're not set in stone. But those are the ideas that we are putting forward in these guidelines to help direct that conversation. And lastly, we have landscape guidelines that are in this document. There are specific species, specific habitats and specific densities depending upon where it falls either within the river or in the transition zone from the edge of the El Rio Trail System that's shown on this graphic in the upper left to the private development, how that transition zone's going to happen to the private development where they may have a more lush plant palette, a more turf-based plant palette than the native river habitat that we're proposing down in the river and in the river itself. Now, I need to make a point of this because we've added some new notes based on the salt cedar growth that has been in the news, obviously, and the removal of that salt cedar that is at some point going to be a phased-in approach and happen. The flood control district is working on a, a plant restoration habitat that will utilize many of the species that are in this document to reestablish that riverine habitat and take away the salt cedars. So what you're seeing in front of you and what's in the document is all caveated against the fact that Maricopa County Flood Control District is updating their approach to that overall river restoration effort. Our goal is to keep the river as natural Sonoran desert material as possible. And again, the river offers us a great opportunity to reintroduce the habitats that used to occupy that river corridor from the cottonwoods and the willows back in that habitat, because even though you don't see the water, two to three feet down, that water's there. And, and that's what those plants need to survive. And they will outcompete salt cedars given the chance to establish themselves, which again, has been proven in both Rio Salado Habitat and then just upstream in the Trace Rios. So those guidelines are, are in this document to again, provide direction and guidance to the development when they come in to, to do their either section of the trail or their transition zone to the trail. Thank you. Joe?
Any other questions from council? Joe?
This takes us to chapter six, which has the design guidelines for signage. And the, the design guidelines established in this chapter were based, to a large extent, on the wayfinding guidelines that were recently adopted by MAG for the Valley Path Project, which was to establish a brand for the, the trail system throughout the entire valley. And what we're proposing in here is consistent with that, but different enough that it's unique to the project, because I think we wanted something that says El Rio before it says anything else. The standards include regulatory-type signs and orientation-type signs that basically say you are here and it's so many miles or so much distance to the next destination. There may be regulatory signs that say, non-motorized vehicles, or this is for horses only, or something like that. Educational kiosks that provide information about what you're seeing when you're on a particular part of the trail. Identification signs. We've been provided with examples, two different examples for vertical and two different examples for horizontal type signs. And so we really covered all the bases on the, what type of signage should be allowed within the corridor. And it provides a basis that can be shared then amongst the jurisdictions and provide for consistency along the trails. The report also has a section on economic development. And to date at least, our goals for economic development in the corridor have been passive recreation opportunities, connection to regional trails such as the Sun Circle Trail and the Maricopa Trail, and commercial nodes developing primarily at the bridge crossings. The, the report also has recommendations saying that we should identify unique recreational districts. That is, different segments of the corridor could specialize in certain recreational activities and make them a focus. We also should provide a wide range of recreational activities. Consider development of active recreational facilities like ball fields and play fields at appropriate locations besides passive recreation. It's recommended that we activate the trails and parks, provide educational exhibits and stage events. And we should engage children and families, program activities that would involve the use of the trails and open space, of course, once they're developed. And then lastly, well, not quite lastly, form partnerships with stakeholders. And the stakeholders include not only the landowners, but also the user groups that have interest in using the river corridor, whether it's for birding or for mountain biking or hiking. And then lastly, there should be a concerted effort to market the El Rio corridor and promote the use of the facilities once they're developed. So all, all good advice. Which brings us then to the last chapter, which is the pilot projects. And I focused on the pilot project for Goodyear and left ones for Buckeye and Avondale out, so you don't have to worry about those. But our pilot project is the development of a, a trailhead at the intersection of Bullard Avenue and Vineyard. And you may recognize this as a location where there's a small parking lot right there now, which is meant for the educational kiosk for the demonstration project that the county had done for the salt cedar replacement with native habitat. And so the idea was that we would, well, let me say, start back by saying that we are at a little bit of a disadvantage because we don't really own any property down along the river. There are some properties owned by other jurisdictions, but a lot of it is in private hands. And so we don't have the advantage at this point in time at least of what Avondale and Buckeye have, where they own, actually own properties that either they've partially developed or have plans to develop. So we came up with this one where we could potentially partner with the county parks department and use a portion of their property to establish a trailhead. And it would be a great opportunity to do this in connection with the Maricopa Trail, which has the potential of coming down into this area at this location. And then, of course, future development of El Rio Trails either along the banks or down in the river bottom. The cost estimates that were developed for the trail project, or the trailhead project, were broken down in phases so that we don't have to undertake it all at once, we can do it in phases and at the time when it's appropriate and the, and the activity and the functional trails exist. And then at the same time, I'm going to wrap up by talking a little bit about some of the other flood control district projects that they the other flood control district projects that they have underway, just to make sure that you've been kept informed and know what's been going on and what is coming. The Lower Gila River Flood Plate Delineation Study has gotten a lot of attention lately, and that was because, basically, the preliminary flood plain that has been identified has increased by 4,600 acres with about 2,900 acres in the Buckeye slough. So due to the increase in vegetation along the corridor from, from the confluence of the Agua Fria all the way down to Gillespie Dam, there's been so much vegetation that's grown into the channel area that it basically slows down the flow of the flood stage and then basically makes it rise up higher in some areas by as much as five feet. So the flood control district has had this out for review for some time. It's gone through a technical review, an opportunity for comments, so it looks like they'll be wrapping up that comment period here. And at some point, probably before the end of the year, they'll be submitting it to FEMA as new and best information, which will result in some properties that weren't in the flood plain before are back in, are in the flood plain now and have to develop to flood plain regulations. And so there's obviously been a lot of interest and consternation over that by some of the property owners that were affected. Fortunately, in, in Goodyear, this slide shows the areas that are affected in Goodyear, and basically, it's the areas between the, the blue and the red line. So you can see there's a little bit of an area here, which is just south of the 157th Avenue Water Reclamation Facility. There's a little bit of an area here where, which would be part of the Lake and Ranch property. And then there are some areas on the King Ranch property that are potentially in the flood plain that were not in the flood plain before. And so that affects about, about 400 plus or minus acres in Goodyear on properties that would, had, had to deal with the flood plain already, but now they have to deal with a little bit more than they had in the past. In response to some of the comments the flood control district got, they hired STANTEC to do a El Rio Flood Hazard Mitigation Report, and that'll be, be discussed more in the upcoming months. That looked at a variety of different alternatives as to how to mitigate that increased flooding risk that was caused by, or that was identified, I should say, in the delineation study. And it, it looked at a range of activities from clearing a thousand-foot-wide corridor down the center of the, of the channel to construction of a full levee along the north side of the river. Unfortunately, it's a cost range from $200 to $700 million. So that's obviously, while those may be.
Bottom of our list, I'd say.
While there may be solutions, but they're not going to happen overnight by any stretch of the imagination. They're also working on a salt cedar removal and management plan, which again, is, is looking at best practices for trying to address the salt cedar problem. And in conjunction with that, they're going to do a sediment transport analysis, because when you remove the salt cedar and replace it with vegetation, now the water can speed up again. And now, when it does that, it has the potential for carrying more sediment, and then that sediment eventually drops out someplace and could potentially cause another problem. So they're having a study done to analyze that.
Nothing's easy.
So actually, with Buckeye is actually, you know, they're, they're, they're leading the charge in, in getting rid of salt cedars, and you know, they've gotten Washington's attention. They've been down and all of that. So we don't have to worry that's not going to flow, doesn't flow uphill, still, anything that happens. I just want to put you at ease. We're not going to have an additional cost right away, because it's going to flow the opposite direction. So it, it does, yeah. But it also saves water, right? It's a water source. There's a lot of water there.
It's an opportunity to save water by replacing it with species that need less water. Fortunately, we have a stretch of the river that has predominantly cobble strand, which the salt cedar doesn't grow well in. And so we haven't been overrun with the salt cedar nearly as much as the Buckeye area has.
Although the Historical Goodyear Society that was trying to clear those for the centennial will probably tell you differently. They were out there.
Oh, no, they're definitely there, but just not as, quite as extensively.
Right. It's not as dense as they have in those other areas.
And then I mean, I mentioned, we talked earlier about the El Rio Lake. There's a plan underway by the county to evaluate the possibility of relocating the impoundment structure for that. Right now, it's a, an earthen impoundment that blows out when there's a flood event and has to be reconstructed. The idea is that there's maybe a better place for that further downstream, actually, and coming toward Goodyear, where a portion of the lake would actually be within our corporate limits.
Really?
And that would be the location for the impoundment, a constructed impoundment that would be designed to blow out and then be reconstructed after a flood event.
When I, when I took a tour of that, they were doing work on it more closer to the Avondale side. They actually were removing, do you remember that? No? You probably weren't around for that.
Well, the, the reason that lake is there is, is as an impoundment for the RID, so that's how, where the RID canal takeoff point is. The water backs up there and then it is diverted into the canal. But the lake was enhanced by sand and gravel mining operations, and so that's where, and that was progressing back further to the east into, into Avondale in the county.
Wow. Thank you.
And then lastly, I'll just mention, the county has budgeted funds for an environmental assessment for a regional 404 permit. That's in case that if, if they have to conduct an environmental assessment or EIS in order to implement salt cedar removal, they've at least budgeted funds to conduct that study to be able to obtain the regional 404. So that is just another activity that the flood control district is undertaking to try to help solve the problem. And that's really about it. That concludes my remarks. I would reiterate that we, we have a little refinement still to do on the drafts, and we hopefully will be able to get that done by the end of the month. We intend to conduct a public outreach by hosting the open house for the stakeholders in the month of October. And then we plan to revise the plan as necessary and then bring it back to you for adoption by resolution sometime in the December, January timeframe. So that's what you hopefully can expect. And if you get any calls about the plan, you can certainly refer them to me. Be happy to address any comments or concerns that anybody may have.
Thank you. Any questions?
No.
You already announced when the open houses, that Molly is asking about meetings and open houses that you'll be having on this.
The, the date hasn't been set yet.
Will you let us know?
We certainly will.
Thanks. I'm sure they're going to let a lot of people know. I think that's a, that's a big deal. So, Joanne?
Thank you. Well, I'm, I'm thrilled about this. And it is a long, long project, long timely project, started a long time ago, actually 2007 and '08 is when I was on the committee working on this, and then everything dropped, and that's probably when you got rid of your papers, because we didn't think it was going anywhere for quite a long time. And, and I'm thrilled. I think there's great potential here. And what's funny is, back in June, I was on, in a hot air balloon, and I was out by Deer Valley Airport. And that's where the area, kind of Cave Creek area out in there. Well, there's a, and I don't know what the parkway is, but there's a parkway out there and a beautiful trail path with a sidewalk and, just as you were explaining. You, do you know what I'm talking about?
North, probably northern parkway would have been the road job that was built.
That's probably it.
Has a completely separated trail off to the north side of the road.
Well, let me tell you, being up, yes, being up there in that balloon, I'm like, how did they get this? How was this? I mean, it was gorgeous. It was beautiful. And so even if we can't have large bodies of water in areas because of our airport, there was great potential there. And I, and I could see it, you know, from 500 feet above. And that, that was wonderful. I think other things that, and I know that Sherilyn, back a few years ago, we were in a environmental tourism workshop and a, a full day devoted just to environmental tourism. And, and the key thing of, you know, I love the signage concepts and the fact that, you know, you can market and have signage to get people there, but if you don't finish the plan, once somebody gets there and they have no idea where they're going or that, you know, it, it unfortunately, you might as well forget about all your marketing dollars because you're going to upset your tourists that are there, because they don't know what to do and they don't work, don't know where to go. The, I was going to ask you, and you, and you did answer it here towards the end, because I, you know, I, I saw where you had our first pilot, and I wondered why you had chosen that area, I guess connecting it to whatever was already going on. But I, I kept going back to that beautiful bridge that we had another partnership, and yes, it was King Ranch. But you know, I, I look at that and I think, why aren't we, you know, capitalizing on, on that area? But you stated commercial corridors is what you were considering or thought of possibly for that. But I wondered why we weren't looking at that, because it was, it was a beautiful area. And, and really, I guess my, my last thing to say is, you mentioned the Gillespie Dam, and, and what's kind of funny is that my great-grandfather was the head engineer that built that dam and was the justice of the piece of the area. So it's funny that it, it's kind of coming back.
Multitasker.
Yeah, exactly. I appreciate it. I'm looking forward to this going for the next 50 years. Thank you.
Any other comments?
Well, I just want to thank you, gentlemen, and it's really nice to see it coming back again. And I remember how creative everybody was around the table, and cities were talking about what they wanted. It's always difficult when you bring a plan back like this, because now we have so many projects, and so it's really hard when you talk about the overall cost of this. Most of us will not be on this council when a lot of this takes place. I know I won't. Yeah. So, but I, but I think this is how great projects are formed, is it's a continuation, and you do a little bit and a little bit, and it finally, it comes together. And so you have to be dedicated to something like this. You, you have to really believe in it. And so I think that for us as a council, it would be good for us to value this and do whatever we can do at this stage, which is very little at this stage when you think about it, so that we can leave our, the, the history of it with the next council that comes up. And so the, the next council will be, they'll do a little bit, a little bit more. But you know, on the other side of the valleys, it didn't happen overnight, these features. You know, all these tourism, they, it, it took a long time. So it's just nice for the mayor that when it finally comes to fruition, they get to take the credit for it. But it takes a lot. So anyway, thank you very much and for all the work you're doing on it. And, and thank you for pointing out about our West Valley Cities and coming together. We take pride in that, and this is just another one that we can actually publicize, that we are a great partnership out here. So thanks. And thank you, Joe.
Thanks for giving us.
You've been with us a long time, Joe.
I know. Thanks for giving us as much time as we took tonight. And I also want to thank Jeff and Felipe.
Yes, thank you.
They've been a great team to work with on the project and brought a lot of expertise. I learned a lot myself. Thank, thank you.
Well, thank you. Thank you, gentlemen, so much for coming tonight. Okay. All right. I'll give you a moment to leave the table. All right. You know we're going to be adjourning this meeting. We're going to take a little break. We're going to go for the special meeting. So I'm going to adjourn this meeting.